But we're gonna get started. I'd like to call this meeting to the Silver Falls School Board to order and please note attendance Denise. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a few items on our consent agenda tonight. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Student reps, Courtney Ann Carmen.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay, so ASP has been very busy these last weeks as we plan and fundraise for the Mr. S.H.S. pageant. Just this past weekend, the eight boys and the girls committee put on a car wash and a fundraiser at Dutch Brothers. On this Thursday evening, we'll be hosting a bingo night at the high school, complete with a spaghetti dinner for just eight dollars a person. The Mr. S.H.S. pageant takes place this Saturday night at seven o'clock in the auditorium. We would love to see any of you at these events.
At a recent competition, our FBLA kids shined. Sophomore Emily Hyke placed first in FBLA Principles and Practices and fourth in the Electronic Career Portfolio, earning her a trip to the National Leadership Conference in both events. Freshman Grace Howery placed seventh in Introduction to Financial Math and freshman Jessica Moreno placed ninth in Sales Presentation. Additionally, our FBLA won second place for a 5A chapter of the year.
For band, our Wind Ensemble recently placed first for the second year at the Great Western Band Championships, once again receiving qualifying scores for the state championship competition.
The Concert Choir also qualified for state at their district festival. They were asked to sing at the Medical Foundation of Marion and Polk Counties Benefit Fundraisers this Friday. They'll meet Emmett Smith, a former NFL running back.
Congratulations to our speech team. All that talking to walls must have paid off because we are sending eight of our foxes to the state championship in ten different events. Congratulations to Elijah Rakashekhatav, qualifying in extemporaneous speaking and Lincoln Douglas debate. Aaron Marcellet, qualifying in poetry reading and after dinner speaking. Hannah McNutt, qualifying in crows reading. Jenny Rupert, qualifying in radio commentary. Melly Kazel, in after dinner speaking. Houston Winslow, in dramatic interpretation and dual interpretation. Mark Mulder, in dual interpretation. And Brian Sung, qualifying in oratory. Special commendation to Joy Smith, alternate in crows reading. Anna Smith, alternate in expository speaking. And Elijah Rakashekhatav, alternate in impromptu speaking. The state championship tournament will take place April 21st through the 23rd at Western Oregon University.
She is Safe is holding a prom drive for Seattle World High School in Washington. This high school is a school for refugees and immigrants. The club is hoping to get donations of semi-formal to formal dresses and shoes for girls, as well as slacks, nice shirts and shoes for men. The clothing and shoes can be dropped off at the Silverton High School office or Ms. Perthue's room. The wrap-up date for this drive is April 22nd. After this, the club will be sending all the clothing collected to the Seattle World High School.
Our varsity baseball team currently has a zero to one record in league season and a two to four record overall. They have a game tonight at Central High School and their next home game is this Wednesday.
Next we have track and field. Track and field has been having a very successful season so far. They have been training up a very large group of athletes and competing both in league meets and varsity invitationals. They compete this Wednesday in a dual meet at Dallas High School and on Friday an invitational at North Salem High School.
And our varsity softball team currently has a record of seven to three and is starting off the season very strong. Their next home game is tomorrow at 4:30 versus Dallas High School. And that is what we have tonight.
Okay, any questions? Good report. Thank you girls.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna start in with our first audience with visitors. We'd welcome you to address the board at this time. Please be certain to sign in up here at the table before you present. In order to assure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If there's a group of three or more who wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. And then, we have a second audience with visitors later in the meeting that's limited to discussion and action items only. So, would anyone like to address the board now?
Yeah, Ray. Ray Kaiser, 828 Sun Valley Court, Silverton. I just noticed in the minutes, the executive session where the board met to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. So, just to comment to you, and you may have done some things that I'm not aware of earlier in the year with respect to Eugene Field, but it seems to me Eugene Field's going to be declared surplus and it's gonna get sold, I hope. Hope the board has no ideas that there's gonna be some great big landlord. But, my concern is that there should be no implication that there's things going on in closed room in executive session. It seems to me that if you employ an agent to represent the district in the sale of that property, that person or persons is public information. And when it gets to the point of talking about sale prices and contracts and the whole big deal, that's all public information. So, I just, maybe that information's been put out and I miss it, but I wanted to throw that at you. Okay, thank you.
Ray, we've already declared Eugene Field surplus property. And part of the reason we've gone into executive session is because we had an appraisal done on the property and it was to discuss the appraisal and some things like that which we don't, if we're gonna put it up for sale, we don't really want the appraisal to be made public yet.
Appraisal will be, that's public information, right?
It will be, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anyone else?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I forgot to say in my little blurb to please, after you sign in to say your name.
My name is Allison Buddy.
Okay.
First of all, I wanna thank the board for its commitment to the arts and its support of music programs. My son Ethan enthusiastically participates in several bands at Silverton High School. He gets up just after 6:00 a.m. to attend Zero Period Jazz and he's happy to do it, which I find remarkable in a 14-year-old boy. For this reason, I am very concerned that Zero Period Jazz is being moved to the daytime schedule. Ethan's schedule has not planned for this. They plan a year in advance and it's not planned for this. And he wouldn't be able to participate. I understand from several other jazz parents that their students haven't planned for it either. Ethan will not be able to participate and I question whether there would be adequate enrollment for the class. Other high schools in the area have moved their jazz bands from Zero Period to the daytime schedule and in most cases, the class is either poorly attended and so it gets canceled, or it's moved back to the Zero Period so that it can succeed. I am so appreciative of this school district for supporting diverse programs. It is the reason my family chose Silverton. It's critical for all students to be supported. Music students are often academically gifted and they possess real-world skills. Music programs do a lot to ensure the success of students in high school, in higher education, and in the workforce. It can also be true that music students are often not athletically inclined. My son isn't. Silverton High School places a premium on athletic programs and its support of those programs is felt by the entire community. I'm glad Silverton Heights athletes have that support and I hope that our music students have it too. These are not kids who ask for a lot. In fact, in most cases, these are kids who show up and say, "What can I do?" And so, I'm asking the board to put jazz band back at Zero Period. Thank you very much.
Okay, any questions for Allison?
We're able to discuss this hour, what can I ask questions? Andy, can we, I'd just like to have some commentary as to why there's some movement of this and what is the basis behind the decision of moving from Zero Period?
Sure, and Mark Han is here this evening and may be able to address some questions or any information that I might not be able to capture entirely. But, the Zero Period option that's been specific to jazz band has been in place the last two years. And it has been a popular option. What we have discovered though, over the last couple of years, is that, first of all, when you schedule a class at any time during the day, it really does have to take into consideration multiple variables. Everything from conflicts with students to availability of staff for other purposes and a variety of other reasons. And really what we've discovered with this is that, over the last two years, is that there have been other implications as a result of the availability of the band instructor at that time of the day that may create some challenges in the building for us to be able to have that instructor meet the needs of all students in the school. And, that essentially is the extent of it. Now, what I can share with you is that when a master schedule is developed, and keep in mind as a board, that when you're talking about 1,200 students over seven period day, I mean, you can do the math. Statistically, there are hundreds and hundreds of options for consideration of master schedules. And even though, in some cases, the classes remain the same every year, the number of sections shift, what they're referred to as singletons, the locations of singletons throughout the day shift, based entirely upon student interest and desire to have that class. So, when a master schedule is developed, it's developed with singletons first, the placement of students in those classes first throughout the day, and then placing doubletons and tripletons in, like, multiple PE classes, multiple social studies sections, et cetera, throughout the day. And every attempt is made to actually eliminate, and I don't hesitate to use that word, to eliminate the conflicts of students to be able to access singletons within a master schedule. That process is underway right now. And so, you know, that is maybe more secondary to the question you asked, Erin, but the origin of that is simply due to the difficulty in having us be able to meet the needs of all students and having that staff member access other needs of the building.
So, there's an availability issue then at 7:00 a.m. or whenever they...
Yeah, yeah, remember, we're mandated by the contract. So, that teacher teaches for a contract day that is now actually shorter than any other teacher in the building and so it creates some issues at the end of the day, as much as at the beginning of the day.
Okay. Okay, thank you Allison.
Hello, my name is Sierra Porter and I am a 7th grade student at Mark Twain Middle School. I am the first tier flute for my school's concert band and jazz band. And I came here today to tell you about what it means to me and for all my peers, and how much jazz band really matters to us. First of all, it's a passion. I'm only 13, but if there's one thing in this world that I know for sure, it's that I was put here on this world to make music. The next thing I want to say is that jazz band is completely different than concert band. We learn totally different skills. How to make our own style of playing and it's a lot more expressive and creative than concert band. Every day I wake up, oh, not every day, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I wake up early, happy, yeah, a teenager waking up happy, to go to my Zero Period because jazz band makes me feel special and it makes all of us feel very special. It's more to us than just, you know, playing an instrument. It's our life. And I thank you for listening to me today, because it means a lot to me.
Thank you, Sierra. Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thanks Sierra. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify, just based on Sierra's comments, because it may have created some confusion with some of you about the fact she's a middle school student, even though this is a high school class, middle school students have been invited to attend that early bird class as well. And so, there are a number of middle school students who have attended as well.
Do you know approximately how many students participate?
I can't say with certainty. I don't have that exact number wrong.
Is it pretty well attended?
I believe so.
It is. I'm in the jazz band.
And has attendance actually gone up over the last two years because it's a Zero Period class now compared to when it was during the regular school?
Yeah, and that would really happen with any course. You know, I mean, I guess, when we think in terms of Zero Periods and what we've been able to make available, if a person is able to, a student is able to access that period, then they have, of course, fewer conflicts during the day. And so, as long as they're willing to get up and be there at 7:00 in the morning, then there's the opportunity for that to occur. I think it's fair to say as well though, that, you know, in considering this option, we do a pretty good job, in fact, you do a very good job of offering a comprehensive curriculum across the district. And so, as you hear testimony, as you process this information, I also think it's fair to think about other content areas and what could or should be provided as well. Zero Period has been provided for one of our subjects, for correlators, for many, many years. It's almost a legacy. I think it was Rick Cooper who, a couple decades ago, initiated that. But, I'm not aware of any other Zero Period class until we attempted this two years ago. But, I would contend that you might find a similar interest in Ag or in Home Ec or business or some other classes potentially, depending upon what some of those offerings were. And, it's, again, I would just wanna be very cautious in how we move ahead simply because of the great offerings that you provide across the district related to our high school students.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Maddie Traver. I'm at 1355 Jody Drive. I've been in the bands here in the district for six years now. I am attending Silverton High School. I have played clarinet, bass clarinet, and alto saxophone in the jazz band, wind ensemble, concert band, and all through the middle school. And, band is just, it's one of the most important things to me. It's integrated my life, it's given me some form of a social life. It's one of the biggest things I'm counting on for scholarships, for college, and it's overall made me a better person. It's made us all work together and it's taught us teamwork and leadership and so many skills that we're gonna need in the rest of our lives. And I'm sure all of you can know and understand that. And us band kids, we're getting those skills now in high school from being in band, being section leaders, helping one another out. And, I've been in the jazz band for three years now, playing alto sax. And, it's really, really amazing. It's one of the main reasons that I have motivation to get up in the morning. And, I wake up at 5:45, say, "All right, let's get ready for jazz band." Been getting up, doing that same thing for three years in a row now. And, if you put jazz band during the day, I wouldn't be able to, I wouldn't be able to take it, just like Ethan Buddy wouldn't be able to take it. So many people would not be able to take the class because all of us are, we're highly academic students too. We take accelerated classes. I'm taking college courses, accelerated. And I don't have room in my daily schedule in the middle of the day to put another band class along with wind ensemble. We need jazz band in the morning, otherwise, there won't be a jazz band. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Maddie.
I wanna make a comment, I'm really impressed to see the band, Sierra talk about jazz band. I'll tell a little personal story of my own. I was a product of jazz band in middle school. And, I'm a guitar player, but I try and still am, you know, was an athlete too, but my bones are falling apart and I'm not an athlete anymore, but I'm still playing my guitar at 38-years-old age. But, I wasn't in normal band because I was guitar player, right? I didn't play saxophone, trumpet, trombone, anything like that. But, jazz band, when I was in middle school, allowed me the opportunity to participate. It was a Zero Period class twice, three days a week. And, for jazz band, guitar was actually a pretty cool piece to the ensemble. And allowed me to get to know those kids and, you know, associate with kids and develop my musical skill in addition to my academics and athletics. And, I have really good memories doing jazz band competitions on weekends and stuff. So, it allowed me the opportunity to really fit in with a group of kids that I never really got to know very well, because I wasn't in a normal band. So, thank you, Sierra and Maddie, thanks for talking about that. It brings back good memories for me too, so, thanks.
Hi, my name's Rich Paskowski. My son Ethan, it's a different Ethan than the first speaker, also participates in the jazz band in the middle school. He's a 7th grader, 13-year-old. And, I just wanna say, I cannot believe the progress this band has made and the growth that my son has had playing saxophone in the band. I'm not that musically inclined, but I have done a little bit in my past. The growth that he has, I really encourage you to listen to the band. I'm sure there's some recordings you'll find. What they've done is really impressive, as some of the others have said, and I'm sure as you know, music is a great part of our education. This is one of those programs, the kids are super enthusiastic about getting up and going. My son doesn't really get up the other days of the week, we have to prod him out of bed. He's typical, at least for me, I remember back in junior high, I wasn't so excited about sitting in the classroom, but he is about being in this jazz band. He's getting up and getting there twice a week. Obviously, there's momentum with this group. You asked about the size of it. Looking up at the stage when the middle school group is up there, it's 20 or 30 kids, I believe, something like that. It's gonna carry on with them into the high school program. If it's cut now, it's sending the wrong message. We need to find a way to help it continue. It's a win-win. The kids are excited about it, they're getting an education and they wanna be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
So, does jazz band only meet two days a week, or is it two days a week that they invite the middle school kids with the high school?
The middle schoolers are meeting twice a week. I'm not sure the extent of the rest of the program.
So, they're meeting twice a week with the high school kids. And Andy, does the high school, is it five days a week?
I believe so. Yes.
It's three days and then a day of sectionals, so most of them go forward and then right then.
Four days a week for the high schoolers, two days a week for the middle schoolers.
Okay. And the jazz band instructor, is it the same that teaches the marching band and all the other?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, is he the one that's having issues with the schedule? Or does he want to continue on with the jazz band program?
I know he wants to continue.
Yeah, I need to interject, Mr. Balliff. I think we just need to be very careful about discussing personnel matters in a public session like this, that's all. So, nonetheless, a fair question. I think he's generally a supporter, of course, of all the music opportunities for kids.
Okay. The kids love him, I can say that.
Right on.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Steve Buddy. This is kinda like Ethan Part Two. I'm the father of a Silverton High freshman and Ethan is, among other things, a talented trumpet player and a lover of jazz, as well as other genres of music. I was at first skeptical of the likelihood of him getting out of bed extra early to make it to a Zero Period rehearsal class, because he's 14 and he's not a morning person. But, he's consistently confounded my expectations by willingly getting up on time to make it to school by 7:00 a.m. And the effort he makes to do this, four days a week, is teaching him perseverance and time management, along with the self-reliance and teamwork skills that come from any musical education. I do appreciate the difficulty of operating an educational program that must cater to the needs of a diverse student population. I know that difficult choices have to be made, but the school, the faculty, and the board work for the community and as a member of the community, I'm here to let you know that my son and I respectful the request that you not eliminate Zero Period Jazz Band. The community of Silverton has already shown how important the high school music program is to them by contributing $40,000 for new band uniforms, marching band uniforms. And I hope that the board and the administrative staff of Silverton High School could show a similar level of support by finding a way to save Zero Period Jazz Band. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and commitment to our kids and our school district. I'm also here to talk a little bit about jazz band, but music and band and choir in general, first of all, congratulations to the Concert Choir who qualified for state this past week. I know a lot of people are gonna be sad to see Mrs. Kircher leave us. Secondly, some of us in the community are forming a booster club, kind of, nonprofit to help with extra fundraising for things that the music program in our districts need, like musical instruments for kids who can't rent them, or musical repair, things like that. And so, some of that, this is one of the reasons why some of us have banded together about this Zero Jazz Band period issue, because as we've been kind of meeting as a group of parents and community members, this Zero Band period issue is a big issue for a lot of our students. And, I'm so happy that there were some students here today that were able to speak to you, but I also wanted to speak a little bit more as far as to be a voice for the middle school. Also, 5th and 6th graders participate in band. And there is approximately 25 to 30 6th graders that'll be moving up in the band program. And currently, there's about 30 middle schoolers already in jazz band alone. That doesn't encompass the whole band program. And then, of course, the high school has a large amount of students participating in marching band, wind ensemble, concert band, jazz band. So, I have had some conversations with Mr. Belando about this because I don't have any current students in the district and I wanted, I had reached out to him. And, I guess some of the questions that I would like to have you think about is if, like, Mr. Belando said, "We can't discuss personnel issues" and that's not why I'm here, but if it's been working, why are we changing it? And we have all of these kids that are, that you've heard, a couple of that you've heard from, that are gonna be affected by this potential elimination, and more so, the middle schoolers. Because Zero Band won't be available to them anymore and it wouldn't probably be a possibility after school because of teacher responsibilities with their meetings and other lists that I had from Mr. Belando here for after-school requirements that teachers are responsible for. So, like Steve said, and actually some other parents too, we have this immense momentum growing right now in our music programs and our art programs, all of them. And as a former alumni who has been a part of all of that, and it's been great, and in my first career, I was a music major, I would hate to see that momentum be, you know, stopped abruptly and then have to be rebuilt back up with some of those middle schoolers that are gonna miss out on something that is really enjoyable. I really wish that some, that the Franzas could've been here tonight, because they have Andrew in jazz band and he just shines and he loves jazz band. Sorry, it's a very, very emotional thing to me when music education is so important. And also, jazz band is one thing that uses part of the brain, well, all music does in general, uses right-side brain, but jazz band uses math skills, it uses creativity, uses improvisation, and also teamwork. There's, I mean, the list and the research is long, 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 long. So anyhow, I just encourage you all to look into the situation, to have discussions with. I'm so glad that Mr. Han is here tonight and can hear all of this discussion as well. Have discussion with Mr. Han and Mr. Belando. Have discussion with Mr. Patrick. I know that Mr. Patrick initially reached out to all of us to start this nonprofit, but he hasn't been involved since then. All of us, this has been parent-led and we're getting this off on the road on our own. And hopefully, it will grow into something really big where we can help, you know, help our music programs throughout the entire district. But, thanks for your time. But thanks for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else before we move on?
I have to say, this is one of the more, you know, great outpouring of decisions that I've been able to work about one subject. So I appreciate everybody coming and talking about today. I, just a couple of takeaways, Ethan wants to talk, I'm sorry.
No problem. I'm Liz Traver. I'm Maddie Traver's mom. And I just, in addition to everything that's been said, one thing that I think is really important as a community, as in a school board, is that we show a strong support for all the kids, no matter their interest areas, because I think that that's what makes Silverton strong, that we have a large diversity of interests from our kids, and that makes us strong. And so I just think it's really important to do everything we can to encourage them to pursue those interests, because it really, it helps them, as you can see, it has helped my daughter and many, many kids. So that's all.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have time for one more?
Yeah.
I'm Lady Piper. I apologize for arriving late, I couldn't get here sooner.
Could you please sign in?
Yes. So I'm Elise Piper's daughter, mother, sorry. Not a daughter, I am a daughter, but not hers. But she is an early morning jazz band, and I have been so impressed with the progress that they have made, and these young people getting up early. She wakes herself up in the morning, and of course, all the parents getting the kids there, so impressive. And then to hear them at their concert was magnificent. I truly believe that we need to foster this love of music, and especially jazz, because I love jazz at a younger age. We need to foster it in them, so that when, by the time they get to the high school, they will have some experience with it. Because jazz is kind of a language that you need to grow, it grows on you. My husband and I met in jazz band. We toured Russia, Siberia, Finland, playing alongside a Russian jazz band, if you can believe that. It was phenomenal experience for us. So our oldest daughter's named Jasmine, after the music. We really do love it, and we one-hundred percent support Mr. Patrick and all of his efforts, especially in the jazz area. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Marsha Kramer.
Marsha.
Actually, I didn't come up to talk about the music thing, but here, here, I was one of those Cooper students for four years, and I'm all about music. So I say, if the program fits, wear it. Actually, I am here, though, to support the classified staff, and specifically kitchen staff. I know that you, or you should have, received a letter from our membership, just kind of encouraging you to think a little bit more about doing a three-year contract and maybe considering a one-year contract. Let's see how the numbers play out for a while, rather than just grabbing it by the horns for three years. Just a thought, just something that we kind of thought about. So I'm just encouraging you to think about both sides and support our classified kitchen staff who are working very, very hard, so.
Okay. Thank you, Marsha. Anyone else?
We can jump again there, but yeah, I'll just kind of come back, and this is one of the more larger groups of folks that I've seen kind of give their opinions on what subjects. So I'm encouraged to thank you, get to, well, and talk about jazz band. The only thing that I took away is, you know, Andy had mentioned about the layers, and they still have a zero-period, you know, and if, you know, that's still going to continue, you know, I mean, I don't know the whole situation, but if that's going to continue, I want to continue jazz band. You know, what I think we see here is, and what I take away from this is, potentially, again, we have to look at all opportunities, and I understand that. But if we have a kind of a testimony of folks that saying, you know, we're committed, these kids are getting up at five forty-five AM, why turn them away? I mean, I guess my opinion is, if they're begging for it, it's our job to try to help accommodate that, you know. And just the development, I know I experienced my own personal life, grew up in music, and still have this depth. I think it's a valuable thing. So I don't know what protocol is here, and I don't want to overstep our bounds here, but, you know, is there any way we can ask to maybe look into it, you know, and to see if there's any way around this? Again, I don't know all the situation involved, but I think we probably owe it to the kids and to our folks who shared the message, and maybe look into, see if there's really any way that we can accommodate this and keep it going.
We have and continue to look at options.
Yeah.
And if the full board is in agreement, of course, we'll look into it even more. But yeah, this is by no means a subject that's finished. You know, clearly, we've got some interest here tonight, and that speaks largely to the need. At the same time, there are multiple variables at play here, and I think it's just fair that the board fully understands that. And for us to be able to address all the implications of a decision like this, it's very important that we take this information and interpret that with all the other information that we have to relate to a decision like this. So ultimately, master scheduling is not a board decision, I mean, that's ultimately an administrative decision. Of course, your influence on that makes a difference, and if you direct me to do something, that's a different story. At the same time, you know, that's why you have administrators as well, to take all the information and make the most informed decisions as we can.
Clearly, we don't have all the information right now, but it might be good to have a conversation about that in the future.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I'm fully aware of the linkages between music and learning in general. It exercises the whole brain, and I, yeah, I'd like some more information. You know, I mean, basically, what this boils down to is probably money and resources. We're just, because budgets are having to get tightened for next year, essentially. And I'm hearing rumblings that other programs are getting squeezed for next year. Is that kind of, is that fair to say?
Well, I mean, we've had some discussions about, you know, the poverty calculation, this resulting in a minimized funding force. This decision is not a matter of funding. I mean, what we currently have as far as offerings for music at both middle and high school will continue next year, and that will be in your budget that you receive. And as far as other program offerings, I mean, everything will be clear during the budget development process with Budget Committee, but I'm not aware of any program reductions, Tom, and I've seen the majority of the proposals at this point.
Just hearing rumblings, so yeah.
Yeah, sure, sure.
And I saw the data with that presentation about the poverty recalculation
Right, right.
And the way they're doing it retroactively, and I just kind of went, oh, boy, that's not going to hurt, so.
Okay.
Possibly, Andy, at our next work session, we could get an update on this.
You bet.
Hear a little more information. Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. We have three policies with our first reading tonight. BBFA, Board Member Ethics and Conflicts of Interest. Does anybody have any questions or issues with this one?
Actually, I think it's a good change.
Okay. BBFB, Board Member Ethics and Nepotism. Questions? Okay. And GBC, Staff Ethics. Okay, we're good on that. Proposed new policy, this is the second reading, and there were no changes from the first time, but just in case anybody had any more questions. Policy, GCBDD slash GDBDD, sick time. Nobody? Okay. Teacher Appreciation Week. This is something, we had a resolution in our board packet. We want to take a week to honor our awesome teachers in this district and our awesome, you know, teaching staff, counselors. And I'm just going to go ahead and read this resolution. This is an action item later tonight to adopt this. Whereas teachers, school counselors, specialists, and all licensed instructional staff mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling, and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community, now therefore be it resolved that the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors proclaims May second through sixth, two thousand sixteen, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join in this observance, personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. Does anybody have any comments? Or, like I said, this is an action item tonight, and I hope we can adopt it. I don't think it'll be a problem. But just a way to kind of show some appreciation and honor all the awesome teachers in this district, and we do have a whole bunch of them, so.
So has there been any thought to just making it like the first week in May every year, or something like that?
I think it usually is around the same time every year, but we kind of like to do something to point it out, otherwise it just kind of gets shuffled along with everything else.
It's a national designation, it's a same week across the country every year.
Yeah, yeah. We just kind of like to make a point to recognize it, Tom, but it is about the same time every year, so. Next discussion item, renewal of district food services management contract with Sedexo America LLC. Andy, did you want to start us off with this?
Yes, I would like to, Mr. Chair.
And we also had quite a large section in our packet on this, so Andy's going to give us kind of a summary of that and some...
I did give you some talking points in your packet, and what I want to use is that document, or that information is some of my, some of the information I'd like to share with you this evening about my recommendation for our continued relationship with Sedexo for food service management services in this school district. And my recommendation is a three-year recommendation for consideration, and I'll discuss a little bit more about that in just a moment. But I do have some updated information from those talking points that I shared with you, but for your benefit, and actually for the benefit of the audience, both here and watching on television, I'd like to highlight a few of those points, and some of this I'll read verbatim. First of all, and some of you are very well aware of this, because you were even on the board at that time, we've had a longstanding history with food service, and we've, we actually have, since unification in nineteen ninety-seven, worked very hard, especially our food service staff, they're incredible people and incredible workers, but worked very hard at, you know, meeting really the goal of self-sustainability. In other words, being able to offer a food service program with zero use of reserves every year, and providing daily nutritious, healthy, and compliant meals to all of our kids for breakfast and lunch every day. This goal has been achieved on occasion since nineteen ninety-seven, and from my perspective, it's becoming increasingly challenging to do so. Our most recent audited figures indicate this growing trend. So just a little bit of information, though, that I think is very important to discuss, because it's also very easy to say, well, another school district does it this way, or that school district does it that way. And while I think there is some ease to comparing districts, I want to point out a couple of very specific things about Silver Falls School District, and each, the seven of you are keenly aware of them, and that's the unique nature of this district. You hear some of it tonight with the testimony from people in support of music programs. I think that's, again, an element that defines who we are. But what's more important, especially related to the food service program, is that you have two hundred and forty square miles in this district, and you have thirteen operating schools. You have two charter schools. You have a comprehensive high school. You have small K eights, as small as eighty, to as large as three hundred and twenty kids in our K eights, and of course, our traditional. And I say that because that's a value to you. It's a value that helps define who you are, and it's what you included even when you put your most recent strategic visioning document together. But with that, within those, our schools, we have eleven of our schools that are non-charter, and eight of those have food service programs in them. The larger and more recent challenge is meeting the ever-increasing and complex federal requirements to maintain a food service program in our district, especially the unique nature of our district. The most recent federal child nutrition reauthorization, it was titled the Hungry Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten, resulted in changes such as portion sizes, calorie maximums, daily nutrition requirements, reimbursable meal monitoring, and a host of other requirements which have been difficult to implement with the self-sustaining and self-management model that this district has embraced since nineteen ninety-seven. The two thousand and ten act has been modified a few times since then, and Congress is now considering the Child Nutrition Act reauthorization of two thousand and fifteen, which is slated to be approved in two thousand and sixteen. So a factor considered by the board last year, in two thousand and fifteen, for contracted management services was the increasing use of financial reserves to operate our program. It has increased from eleven thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars, that's a deficit, in two thousand and eleven, twelve, to forty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, that's a deficit, in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. It's operating in the red, and that trend is continuing year after year. In addition, the district has found it increasingly difficult to maintain program compliance each year. Multiple indicators were discovered during our pre-audit last year and were corrected prior to that review. And the most notable recent finding, and this was an ouch, this was a huge ouch, was a twenty thousand dollar reimbursable meal sanction in two thousand and eleven, following the child nutrition audit the same year. That was my second year on the job. That caught my attention, and I caught the attention of a lot of you folks as well. So taking these serious considerations or concerns into consideration, the school board approved a five-month management contract with Sedexo beginning in February of two thousand and fifteen. The school board approved a one-year extension of the same contract in spring of two thousand and fifteen. And use of contracted management services is making gains towards meeting the school district board goals that you've identified in reaching the federal child nutrition program compliance, and places really in an ideal position to meet the reauthorization requirements anticipated in two thousand and sixteen. So I just want to highlight a few of the other things that have occurred. First of all, related to the board goals, you identified two during your, at the time of your approval of use of Sedexo, again, for management services only, not for labor services in this district. And one of them was to see if we can result in increased district-wide student participation. And there has been some increase in participation. There's no doubt about it. However, I echo the statements that Marsha made and the letter that you received from Ron Duda the other day. Yeah, full-day kindergarten is here, and full-day kindergarten, no doubt, contributed to those numbers. I can't tell you exactly, but I'm certain they did. With that said, however, this is the interesting part. That measure, in and of itself, I wouldn't be standing here in front of you today and recommending your reauthorization, or excuse me, your approval of this contract if that was the only measure that we were using. That's a solid measure, it's working, it says that kids are eating, and they're eating lots, but there are so many other variables at play here. As an example, you take a look at the free and reduced level, the poverty level of this district as compared to just three years ago, and you're down about four percent. Some schools are down ten percent in their poverty level. Scotts Mills is down ten percent from three years ago. Eugene Field is up five percent. A couple of the other schools are down, so the economy is clearly having an impact. So if you don't consider something like we have, you know, increasing poverty, excuse me, decreasing poverty in our community, while at the same time, we have strong or sustained and possibly even increasing numbers of participation, I think we're missing a point. The other piece, which are much, much more difficult to measure, are things like the attention to compliance, record-keeping, and monitoring. I mean, a year in, we know we've tightened up some compliance monitoring and record-keeping specific to a number of our schools. We also know that we're now serving compliant meals, where in the past, we had a number of students eating entrees and other items prior to even receiving a balanced meal or a compliant meal, which is not necessarily appropriate or legal. We've tightened that up. You've reduced your reliance upon food service financial reserves. It's estimated at the end of this year to be between twenty and twenty-five thousand at year end. If that comes to fruition, that's twenty thousand dollars less than what we're experiencing at the end of last year, and I believe that it will. Couple of other things just to mention to you. We've received full compliance at Department of Ed child nutrition requirements since Sedexo has come on board. That's huge. We have to be compliant, and the complexity of the compliance requirements are increasing. No financial compliance findings were determined in two thousand and fifteen. They were in two thousand and eleven, we've made gains. We've seen a huge increase in the number of summer lunch program participation in sites. In two thousand and fourteen, over the summer, you serve four thousand three hundred and five meals. Last year, you served six thousand six hundred and eighty-nine meals, that's almost twenty-four hundred more meals for your summer program. And while we may... And while we may be able to manage that on our own, I can guarantee you the ideas, the creativity and some of the resources that have come from Sedexo are something that we wouldn't have been able to match on our own.
Andy, can you comment why the summer programs important to our food service program?
Well, it's important, I think, if you think philosophically about feeding kids. There's a three-month span where many of our kids rely upon daily breakfast and lunch. And so the federal government has created opportunities to have.
I understand now, but it doesn't have direct effect on our operations.
There's actually, that's true. It doesn't, other than it does generate some revenue for us because the reimbursement rate for the summer lunch meals are slightly higher than they are for the regular school year meals. So there's some benefit to that. Anyway, it's a measure. Wally, you're correct, in and of itself is, and we have no requirement to do it, but we believe it's the right thing to do. We've actually seen quite a few gains in something that I've even personally struggled with when I was principal at Mark Twain, and that is providing appropriate nutritional data for our diabetic students and students who need specified meal programs. We've been able to acquire that resource from Sedexo. Correct food portion sizes are occurring now. We have improved controls on food inventory. We're not using prepackaged food. In fact, all food is now cooked on-site. Where in the past, some of you may recall this, we've actually had the high schools serving as the centralized kitchen and pre-cooked food was shipped out to many of our schools, where all of that is now occurring on-site. Some of the management changes have resulted in higher staffing requirement and expectations for food preparation. We fully understand that. But to address these, we've also approved and increased the number of food service hours. We've increased hours of existing employees and we've reclassified existing employees, all of those as an additional cost to the school district, still again resulting in fewer dollars from our reserve having to be used to support the food service program. We've also provided through Sedexo's assistance professional development opportunities through trainings upon request and of course scheduled monthly staff meetings and opportunities that have been provided through monthly staff meetings to bring our staff up to board, up on board as much as possible. I've been pleased that Sedexo has provided the Healthy Snacks Calculator to support school clubs and non-food service vendors. As a school club, we just, if I'm the advisor or a teacher overseeing a school club, I can't just unilaterally sell what I want during the school day. The federal law requires that if I have any items during the food school day, such as our frothy fox shop or other items that are supported during the school day, we're required to maintain minimum federal requirements in order to do that. And they've been able to help us support those processes in our district. They've qualified and submitted for, farm-to-school grants in our behalf, and then of course they've provided some equipment for us to use in our schools. We know we have some things to work on. We know this is a work in progress. But I also believe that there are times when we really have to take a look very carefully at what it is that we're doing and ask ourselves the question, is it working? And from my perspective and having multiple years in this district, what I can tell you is I believe this is working as well, if not better than we've ever experienced in this district from a food service standpoint. And it's getting increasingly complex as we meet those. However, where we can improve, we're establishing a food service advisory committee. It's a finding from the Department of Education with our recent audit and it's being coordinated now. I think we need to look at additional farm-to-school food options, state grants and competitive food grant opportunities. I think we need to, at some point, as we discussed a little bit in the past without a lot of energy, consider, is it worthy of looking at additional food service opportunities in our school district? We have three schools right now who currently do not have our food service program. Increase the number of summer lunch sites and opportunities around that. After-school child nutrition opportunities, which some school districts are doing, and Sedexo has a history of providing success in. Increase food choice offerings at site, additional training for food staff and point-of-sale administrators and others. So with that said, I really think that it's important that we hear from the food service staff members, which we have. They actually met with Dandy Stevens and me last week and I appreciate their insight. They had some very good information to share. I asked them four questions and asked them each to respond. And here are just some patterns of information that I heard from our cooks. They have pride in their work. They enjoy their students. They adapt as changes occur. They have many years in the district. They have great relationships with kids, adapting to new systems, learning new menu items. They produce a quality product with customer service and they're very proud to do so. They would like to see some consideration for food variety given. Larger print-on menus was one of the suggestions made. Maybe some additional training around some of the paperwork that's required simply because the amount of paperwork and the volume of paperwork has increased. Some of that is specific to the regulations that we're expected to maintain at the federal, from the federal government. They'd like to know, they would like administrators to know that the cooks have learned a lot about food control. They believe that recipes could be varied. Kids might like it better. That's very good feedback. They encourage administrators and board members to come to cafeterias to eat them or even join them in the kitchen on occasion as they're serving kids. Additional subsupport, and that's another fair statement as well, because substitutes are very difficult for us to find and manage even in some cases, especially in the classified arena. And there were some very serious question about concerns of them losing their jobs. And what I'm telling you is, and this is exactly what I shared with them, I have absolutely no interest in doing anything but providing continued management services support for food service in this district because I believe it's working. I have no interest in displacing any food service employees. In fact, from a district perspective, I don't think that anyone would even be interested in us if we asked any outside company to come in and do our labor services. It's not an interest of mine and I haven't heard from any of the seven of you, and I think it's very important that we reinforce that statement in public. Other information, it's important for the cooks to feel valued. I think that's a very good point. Like the selection of the food that we currently provide, especially at Silverton High School. And a few folks commented on having more than one hard-to-serve item on the menu on the same day, simply because it takes as much time and effort as it does do it. It was interesting to know that multiple staff members say they support the continuation of Sedexo. And they were very honest with me when they made all of these statements. So I share that with you. I will end my comments with two notes. One of them is related to the multi-year recommendation. I share that with you for a couple of reasons. One of them is because continuity is really important in a school district. Tom, we were just talking about the predictability of something like the poverty calculations that have been adjusted when we were counting on something different. Well, when you're talking about multi-year contracts, we do it with our collective bargaining agreements, we do it with other contractors and vendors, it adds continuity and it minimizes unpredictability. And I think that's one factor. Second factor in this case is I'm very concerned about the reauthorization of the National, the Federal Nutrition, Child Nutrition Act in 2016. I don't know what that thing's going to contain or what it's going to mean for us as a district. And having Sedexo onboard, who has proven their worth of interpreting the information and putting it to us in a way that we can understand and demonstrate and that we can do what's best for kids and meet those requirements is, I think, proven beyond its worth. And then finally, I will ask each one of you to continue to refer what's on the back of your placard holders, and that's that mission statement on the wall right there. You each have a copy of your strategic plan. And when you come to points, as a board member in your positions like this, I ask you to ask yourself, what does your mission describe? What is it defined? And how would the mission of this school district and your strategic plan and your core values help you in making the most informed decision about this? So I stand there with, I'm here to recommend the multi-year renewal with Sedexo and we gladly answer some questions and of course have you discuss this. Thank you.
Questions for Andy?
Andy, I have a couple of questions. First of all, this food service advisory committee, was that a recommendation?
No, it's a requirement.
It's a requirement. Okay, is that, is that contained in some law there? We'd have to have that.
It's my understanding.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, ODE is required.
And then secondly, you mentioned several things about potentially expanding our services. Why would that be a benefit for our program to do that?
Well, it goes back to the same thing, Wally. It's just a matter of feeding kids. And it may not be in our best interest to expand options or opportunities for kids. But I do recall, though, there was some very good conversation given to the first bond attempt about expansion of facilities at Central House School. And one of those related, was related to the addition of adequate cafeteria and kitchen space at Central House School, which currently doesn't have it. And it's our only medium-sized K eight school without a food service offering. And so I think it's just a good conversation that needs to occur. If we can't offer it at three schools, should we be offering it at three schools? And I'm certain each of the seven of you have different feelings on that.
With reference to the letter from the classifieds. You know, so were we not feeding the kindergarteners before and now we are?
I believe we were feeding some, Tom, but because the transition for AM and PM kindergarteners was in the midday, especially at Eugene Field School and Butte Creek School, which has more than one section of kindergarten.
So some of, okay, so some of them.
Correct.
One section was getting fed and probably the other one wasn't.
Yeah, and other schools, and again, I don't have that specific answers, but other schools that had kindergarten that may start a little bit later in the morning, let's say 3:00 or 9 o'clock, have those kids through lunch and I believe foods was offered.
Okay, okay. And then there was another, there was one other data that I remember hearing that they felt kind of skewed the numbers for this year is that previously at the high school, they could buy, the kids could buy à la carte. And that was they could buy one small item for a buck or a buck and a half. And now they, because of federal regs, regulations, now they can't do that no more and they have to buy the meal.
Right.
And that helped bump the numbers up. And so, you know, both of those are not, didn't have anything to do with Sedexo. It's just what happened.
Yeah.
And had that, had we stuck with it, those, we would have seen bumps in our local program the same. You know, we would have seen some sort of a upward bump, I imagine.
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm trying to pull it out and compare apples to apples.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's the unfortunate reality here is I think it's hard to compare apples to apples with all the variables at play here. You know, I've had folks tell me too that the fact that they lost the ability to buy entrees at the high school may have actually hurt the number of lunches sold at the high school as well, simply because kids, you know, they just want a burrito, you know, and don't want to have to buy a lunch instead.
Yeah, and so, and you mentioned pre-reduced numbers. Is it, do we generally see our lunches, I mean, if someone qualifies for a free lunch, because there's no, we don't offer a reduced lunch now. It's all, it's either.
That's right. There's a state, there's a state grant to supplement those qualifying for reduced lunches. So there's still that eligibility, Tom, but then we receive the funding for that.
Yeah, yeah. And so what I'm getting at is, and it's not really the fault of any of us, but it's just, it kind of skews the system. So do we see, if someone qualifies, do those folks generally all go get the lunch? And then the folks that have to pay out of pocket, are they choosing, are they making other choices or are the only folks, you know, are we seeing folks that use the lunch program only the ones that qualify for the free lunch?
No, we have, we have multiple students on free lunches that use it. I can't place a metric on that. And part of the reason I can't place a metric on that is because that is such protected information about who qualifies, who doesn't qualify, even when a person at the point-of-sale has a student come through that's on a free lunch, there's no indication that that child's on a free lunch. It shows that that child has a balance, simply because that's information about you or me or someone else who may otherwise qualify and we can't share that information.
Right, right. But we were saying, but you know, you were saying how our, and other districts are seeing this too, but as, if their poverty level goes down a bit, then their lunch numbers go down too.
Well, I think there's.
And we're seeing that here a little bit.
I believe there's that potential. I can't put my thumb on it. But yeah, we definitely seen the poverty rate go down in this district and, you know, it just makes sense when you have 40% of kids in poverty getting free lunch compared to 35%, you're likely going to see a reduction.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess, you know, one of the frustrations I have, and it's just a frustration in general, is that, you know, the feds set the price and then they just keep piling on the regulations and the rules and they don't give you any more money to perform. And that's a big frustration. I got nowhere I can go with that, other than it makes it hard for us.
Sure, absolutely.
So, okay, well, thank you for.
You bet.
Thank you.
Couple of comments and a question too. I think you hit it on the head. I think it's, we're a work in progress here. It's, you know, this has been a full, you know, year that we've used Sedexo and is everything 100% perfect? No. I think we've identified a list of things that we can improve on, and I think we all have to keep that in mind too. It's not perfect. You know, we've done the system for many years before that. We've implemented some change. Change is never easy. Staff, with anybody, but I think we're, it's a work in progress. We make sure we're progressing to many. We're seeing some good numbers and especially the deficit being almost cut in half for one of those last years was a good indicator. It's not everything, but I think we have to keep that in mind. We're in progress. It's not perfect yet, but we're working towards something better. I think we ought to also keep in comment, keep in mind that, you know, we're under different guidelines. It's a different world now, as we've kind of already discussed. And some of the meals aren't going to be what they used to be. And we all love to have some of the things that we were able to have prior, but I think we have to keep in mind that we just can't do that anymore. We have to make sure that these kids are getting nutritious meals and that, you know, we have limitations based on the program. The one other question after me, Andy, was from either of your administrators. We haven't seen any come into the board email box, but have there been any formal complaints run up through the site administrators to the principals regarding the school lunch?
Nearly nonexistent. I polled the administrators again the other day and I went round the room, principal by principal, school by school, and the constant answer was zero. We did receive one complaint at Silverton High School about the quality of the tater tots and that was addressed. So otherwise, I believe my administrators, when they tell me they're not hearing complaints. And that hasn't been the case in the past.
Well, it's good to hear. Again, do you have options if we can, you know, we don't like this.
Right.
Bring our food to school.
Again, just on that note, I think it's important to just recognize the incredible hard work and the talent of our food service staff to produce a product under very, very strict compliance rules and guidelines for these folks, all ladies, day after day after day, for them to produce an incredible product for our kid. I'm very proud of them and I'm very proud of what they offer for this school district.
I saw in your talking points, you talked about the Sedexo applied for this grant for us. Why didn't we do it ourselves?
It wasn't initiated, really, was the extent of it, Todd, and.
Okay. And then you had that we had to increase the staff and the staff hours for these food servers. How come we didn't do that on our own?
Because you would have been further in the hole. I mean, you were at $50,000 in the hole as it was, and that was building. And I think it's fair to say too.
But we can do it now and be lesson hole?
Because of the contract that we have with Sedexo, that's correct. Because remember, they're only providing management services and so as a matter of economy of scale, I'm certain that's a factor here. Economy of scale for an organization like that that has multiple contracts with multiple school districts, allow them to come in and provide efficiencies that we can't realize on our own. Again, I go back to my original point. Eight schools, over 240 square miles in this school district, I don't believe it was Sedexo, but it was another contractor that was actually requested about 15 years ago, shortly after unification to come here and take a look at this. Wally, you remember, you're nodding your head. And they were very clear with us, we cannot make money in your district if we provide the labor. The economy of scale is just too poor. And they have the efficiencies to be able to provide that in our district by providing a fixed-rate cost. Currently, I think it's $2.10 or 15 cents. Don't quote me on those, but a fixed-rate cost that allows us to rely upon them to provide all of the resources necessary to provide the product and for us to provide the labor. So it afforded us the flexibility to increase hours, to reclassify and actually even add positions. We have an inventory control position that we've never been able to provide in the past, but we can afford it now because of the efficiencies that have been provided by Sedexo.
So I don't understand why we couldn't have a consultant or something like that help. I mean, it sounds like some of the staff needed some continuing education, help with the paperwork and that sort of stuff becoming the compliance. Why we couldn't do that though, you know, why we can't do that ourselves?
You can. You can. And we did that for many years. And we discovered that it wasn't working effectively. And so knowing that the number of student participation was decreasing, knowing that we were seeing major concerns about compliance, knowing that we were seeing major concerns about us using increased reserves over a period of a few years, we said, what other options do we have? And this is a model that we consider, that the board considered. They tried it for five months to begin with. It appeared to be working. We've tried it now for another year. It continues to give us indicators, metrics of success, that it's being effective. So that's where this is coming from. We can go back to the old model. We can go out and we can hire a consultant. We hired a consultant in 2011 prior to the ODE audit then. And while I think we did a reasonable job, there were still multiple findings, including one that nailed us for $20,000. So we've done the consultant route in the past. And I think, again, keeping in mind what it would take to hire a a a nutrition specialist and individual who would come in here, who likely we'd have to hire with a a university degree to come in with all the nutrition requirements necessary to do this job. And and we we wouldn't be able to compete with the resources that, from my perspective anyway, that we're we're getting from from SEDEXO. I think it's just a a model that is demonstrating that it's working. This board can, of course, choose to say, no, we don't want to use SEDEXO, we don't use any contracted services, we want to do it all in-house. The question that I would ask of you is, why? If this is working, why would we go back to the old system that wasn't working, year after year after year for us?
Well, it wouldn't be the old system. They they've been, they have new training now, they they're up with the guidelines, the new guidelines, so.
But we don't have anybody who can, who, who, for one thing, has time to do that right now. Our administrators are all working, you know, their jobs are full right now. We don't, we don't have anybody who can take over the spot that Sue Ann's doing for SEDEXO to keep up with all the new, all the regulations that are currently in place and all the ones that are coming down the pipe, which, I mean, Sue Ann told us at our last report, just in the last year, there's been changes in the compliance, compliance requirements already. And we'd have to pay somebody, if we were to try to do that ourselves, we would have to pay somebody a huge salary to 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 take that on and to to keep up with all that. And it'd be one person, whereas, you know, SEDEXO, sure, they're a big company, but they have the resources to to manage that a lot more efficiently than we can in our own, ourselves, I think.
The requirements for food service have just grown enormously over the last six years, six or eight years, and it's, it's, takes, takes a lot to keep up on that, and we've, we've seen that.
And I think they're about to grow again if they're going to renew this, the, if the fed, federal government's going to renew the whole food serp, food act, or whatever they call it, this year, you know, they're not going to reduce requirements, I don't think. They don't usually do that, so I think it's probably just going to get worse.
There's a lot of people making big salaries, making changes, changing rules to
Yeah.
as part of their job.
Yeah.
The rules bound to us.
In essence, they've become our consultants, you know?
Yeah.
And done something, and I think, you know, again, this is before I stepped in as a board member, but I think, you know, kudos to the board for understanding we had a weakness, we had a deficit. And as good leadership, you hire a new weakness, right? And you and you try to find some, somebody who can swiftly come in and make a decision and help you out with a problem. And, you know, as an, as our consultant, that's what SEDEXO has done. Of course, we'd love to be able to do it in-house. Of course, we'd love to be able to do it from, you know, inside our own district. I just don't know if it's feasible.
And it's not a slight at all against the the staff that we had in place and that we currently have in place, our kitchen staff and our cooks and and all the people that work in the kitchens. It's not a slight against them at all. I mean, to keep up with these regulations is just, it's mind boggling, you know? You need somebody who's, who can do that all the time and who's an expert in that. And, you know, people don't have the time to do that. So I just think that to keep the management piece is a good decision.
You know, I'm curious, like Aaron, I wasn't here when this was adopted, but prior to adopting the SEDEXO model, were there any other vendors that were competing for the same position?
No.
So they were just the the lone bidder?
Correct.
Wow.
And and we did a full request for proposals, published geographically statewide, and there were no other vendors that submitted proposals.
What Andy alluded to though, fifteen years ago, or whatever, we did, we did that, do an RFP, and there were people came in and said they didn't want any part of it because there's no way they can make it here.
So then, Andy, what's the benefit then of of rushing in? Maybe rushing's not the best word. What's the benefit of locking in SEDEXO for the next three years compared to just on an annual basis?
The, 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 the two reasons that I shared with you, Ron, I mean, just, just continuity. We know what we have, predictability, we know that we have a three or two or multi-year contract that that provides that kind of a continuity. A renewal like this, you're going to have this kind of continued attention on an annual basis. I I I believe that to be the case. And I, I think we have to ask ourselves, if you have a system that's in place that's working and and you can demonstrate to the public that it's in the public interest to have that service on more than a single year basis, then then I would encourage you to do so, because I think it helps minimize the potential for, you know, the unpredictability that I'm talking about. And I can't tell you what that would be. All I can tell you is that we all appreciate having something that we can see two or three years down the road and say, we know, in a school district where there's so many unpredictable variables at play anyway, including the National Child Nutrition Act, which we don't know what that's going to provide us next year. If we know that we have SEDEXO on board for three years, at least two years, we know that we have some continuity in place to bring those changes on board without another proposal next year, without continued input and opportunity, while, you know, it's it's valued at the same time, if we know that we have two years, we we know that, or three years, we know that we have that system in place to help manage that as best as possible, Ron. That's, that's the best that I can do.
It also helps on the management side, because if they see a contract coming up and employees may start to have to shift, and they, that way they know they have a set amount of work and they can staff accordingly, and they know how far that work is going to stay up.
I think, I think my only concern is, I'll use a sports analogy, is when you look at free agency. And so you spend a high amount for a free agent that did a fantastic job in their contract year. Once they lock in a long-term contract, sometimes they just start to coast. The performance goes down and you're not getting what you pay for. So if you keep them hungry on a year-by-year basis, keep them honest. It seems like that's really in the best interest of everyone, if there's no financial penalty for locking in just on an annual basis compared to a three-year term.
Sure.
Ron, I think there is, there would be, there is, yeah, there is performance things and just keeping up with the federal regulations and everything. If we don't do that, the district's going to get hit financially and, you know,
The law
SEDEXO, I'm not going to, you know, that's going to be a blight on SEDEXO too, if they, if they don't keep up. I think it's just a continuing thing with the regulations and the compliance issue.
The law requires that SEDEXO is not allowed to increase their operating cost for us any higher than the CP, the CPI U, urban CPI, specific to a year. And this year, I believe it was two point nine percent, and the increase was two percent that we negotiated with SEDEXO for the one-year contract. So there's that safeguard in place as well. There are caps on what can be charged. Again, I know you're talking about more performance, but there are some particulars in place. And again, contract management is is really what it comes down to.
Is there any extra fiscal incentive to do three years versus one?
No.
I, I think that that food staff, I think that they're more than capable of doing it. I think they're very competent. I think they can do the the paperwork if given the chance. I have, I have complete faith in them, so.
Are we in the black yet? I'm, I'm pretty sure, want to make sure I understand that. If I understand, we're still in the red?
All, Tom, we won't know for certain until we get our, close our books and get our audit next fall or early, early January. But all indicators are at this point that we're, we're, we're making progress.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Again, an action item later tonight. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
We'll move along. Okay, administrator and staff reports. Andy, you're back up. District facility project update.
We have a couple of things in front of you that I'll, I'll address in just a moment related to a couple of change orders at the Slater project that I want to be real clear about. Otherwise, just overall district facility project update, we have the contractor on board for both of Butte Creek and the Scotts Mills project. And if you recall, that's a CMGC contract, Construction Manager General Contractor, which means, you know, we have some construction documents prepared, but the contractor's at the table for the last portion of the contract, which means that they have pretty significant say into both unique projects and and how those are turning out. So based upon input from Joel, is that we're making progress and are on track and on schedule to have both of those projects completed over the summertime. We, related to the Slater project and the changes as a result of the Slater project, we still have a number of, of course, organizational planning efforts in place for the large move that's slated to occur this summer. We have, have meetings both at Eugene Field and with sixth grade teachers from Robert Frost and at Mark Twain about what that looks like, and they're packing and doing a number of organizational things ready for that. And we have systems in place that, again, we're containing all of that in-house. And so that will be a stretch, but at the same time, knowing that we have two schools, Butte Creek and Scotts Mills, shut down for the majority of the summer, we're shutting down Eugene Field, we are budgeting for some additional staff to help with the move, otherwise we're going to be able to manage and and take care of this in-house as a, partially because we can do it, we've had some experience, and of course, it will also save you some money in the long run. Specific to Slater Street, that that project, the middle school and Community Roots School project is moving ahead. We have the majority of the abatement finished. I mean, you drive by and you take a look, you can see that Community Roots footprint is, is, it being formed with the, with the pads out there for the, for the modulators. You can see where the old egg shop was. We have nearly all the excavation in there is, is finished. And we believe we're going to acquire the public works permit by midweek this week, which means that we'll be able to begin trenching and and taking care of the public work-specific items very soon. As I've shared with you in the past, though, we, we knew that there would likely be some change orders or some increases in costs related to this project based upon knowns and really mostly unknowns. And in this case, we do have two change orders that I've placed in front of you this evening. It's action item eleven E. And you have those two change orders. One is actually at thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and two dollars, and the other one is slated to be eighty-one thousand, four hundred and two dollars. The thirty-five thousand dollars changes to the fire sprinkler and fire department connection changes, which really is essentially is some differences between when we submitted our ninety-five percent construction documents in mid-December to city review in interpretation and requirements by the city and the fire district over the course of the last few months. We finally have come to a point where we know what those final changes are, and that is one is specific to the fire sprinkler suppression system. The other one is eighty-one thousand, four hundred and two dollars, and that one is actually, I'm suggesting it be a not to exceed eighty-four thousand dollar figure, simply because it may have, they may have missed one door. But we're required to replace multiple doors in the Slater complex for fire area isolation based upon, and this is above, way out of my league, but based upon the fire hydrant flow adjacent to the school, with how many square feet can be maximum within a certain area. Again, it's all interpretation based upon what the fire district and the city has, has given us. So that eighty-four thousand dollars combined with the thirty-six thousand dollars equates to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a change order at this point. And that puts you about twenty thousand dollars over budget at this point. And it's likely that that number will increase. We've spoken about that a little bit over the last few months. We don't know quite what level that's going to be, but the reality is, is these estimates were created a year and a half ago, and we now have interpretation by a number of compliance experts, specifically the city and the fire district, that result in us having to make some of these changes. So much as I hate to share that news with you, it is the reality of the circumstance, and that's why it's placed in front of you. I I have authorization to approve only expenses up to twenty-five thousand dollars for projects like this or budgeted items like this. Anything above that, it takes board action, so that's why it's being placed in front of you. You'll know that one of the other action items this evening is your consideration of increasing my authority from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars, even if it's for a limited amount over the course of this project, simply because I'm concerned that if I have to wait at least two weeks to get in something in front of you, it could delay the project in such a way that it could be problematic. And again, we can talk about that a little bit more when we discuss those action items, or you can talk about them now, whatever your choice is.
You have a question about that. If if we go ahead and approve that, allow you to go ahead and approve up to fifty thousand dollars, do we still see, have visibility on what those changes are?
Absolutely. And and I would want you to, I would want you to have that, and I think the public expects you to have that. So, you know, while it may, it may be reasonable to say, Andy, you have authority to approve up to two change orders at fifty thousand dollars apiece. Anything beyond that, it has to come back to the board or pick a number. But I think that would allow a little bit more flexibility than we have right now, and I'm just a little concerned that we could be in a delayed situation if if we don't.
I think we've done that in the past with some building projects, where we
You have.
allowed the superintendent to approve change orders over twenty-five thousand to a certain point.
So just to, just to reiterate, the, the, all of these, these change orders we're looking at tonight puts us over at twenty thousand?
Approximately twenty thousand over.
About, okay.
Great. Right. And there's still some contracts that have yet to be fully approved, like the, like the ramping for the modulators, which, you know, we're nearly finished, the RFP is out for that now. And, you know, it appears that the covered play area at Mark Twain will come in under budget, so there's going to be some cost savings there. So it's really hard to say exactly what your estimated overage is right now. You could come out right at the middle still.
Well, I think we talked about this a year ago, so ago, that these are, these were risky items.
That's right.
Other questions for Andy? Okay, Steve, financial report.
Well, despite the disappointment of the last state school fund estimate that'll have a negative effect on us this year and next year with the new poverty calculations, the financial statements continue to look healthy. We've received ninety percent of our budgeted current resources and ninety-five percent of our total general fund budgeted resources. I do project, despite the latest state school fund estimate, that we, we should still come in about ninety-seven percent at the end of the year of of current resources, but somewhere around one hundred and two, one hundred and three percent of budgeted total resources, which includes the beginning fund balance, of course, which was higher than we expected at the beginning of the year. And then on the expense side, trends are good there as well. Obviously, the, the revenue always beats the expenses through April to May, and then state school fund payments stop in May, and then we have our balance of contract payrolls in June. So you see a heavy expenditures in June and not much revenue. So by the time it's all said and done, though, I do project that we'll come in below budgeted expenditures. So essentially, even with the state school fund impact, we should come in positively on both sides of the ledger, so.
Okay.
That's about it.
Questions? Thank you, Steve. Mr. Hann in Silverton High School.
Good evening. Just wanted to start with, for the record, I like the tater tots, so thought I'd just make that clear upfront. So what you have before you is the performance indicator that that I'm responsible for at the high school, which is ninety-six percent of ninth grade SHS students will earn at least six credits. Obviously, we only have the data to the first semester, so you'll look there. We're currently at ninety-two percent, which is twenty-six students that did not meet that requirement out of three hundred and twenty-seven after the first semester. Of those twenty-six students, three of those students had significant health issues and were on a home tutor situation, which limits the total number of credits, so we have a plan in place for those three students. Nine students finished first semester below the three-credit threshold and without additional credit recovery would finish below the six-credit threshold. We have plans in place for each of those to recover credit, and I've met with the counselor to discuss each of those students. Finally, fourteen students passed at least two point seven five credits, and if they pass all of their classes second semester, they'll reach the six-credit threshold, which would put us up at ninety-seven percent. So we would meet our, our goal. You can see the interventions below. I don't need to, to go point by point, but we have many interventions and credit recovery options for these students. I'd also like to highlight some additional two thousand fifteen, sixteen data. I did this last, last year in my spring report and wanted to do that again this year. This fall, our volleyball team made the quarterfinals for the state playoffs and placed third in the state in team GPA with three point six one. This is information that we get from OSAA in terms of the team GPAs. And our, our, I only listed the, the teams that made the top ten in the state. Our girls soccer team qualified for the state playoffs and placed tenth in the state in team GPA with three point five nine. Our boys soccer team qualified for the state playoffs. Our boys cross-country team qualified for the state playoffs and placed tenth in the state in team GPA with three point five seven. And our football team qualified for the state playoffs and placed fourth in the state in team GPA with three point one seven. Over the winter, our basketball team, boys' basketball team qualified for the state playoffs and placed fourth in state in team GPA with 3.58. Our dance team took fourth in state and placed seventh in the state in team GPA with 3.61. Our wrestling team sent seven wrestlers to state, and Austin Reed was crowned a state champion this year. The team placed fourth in the state in team GPA with a 3.21. Our girls swim team advanced in the state for 200 medley relay and 200 free relay, while Lindsay Orr and Jason Orr advanced in individual races respectively. And of course, our girls basketball team won the state championship and placed third in the state in team GPA with 3.71. And as Courtney said earlier, this spring, our choir qualified for state, our band is qualified for state, our FBLA chapter finished second in 5A chapters, and we're sending Emily Hike to nationals, and our speech team is sending eight students to state. The student body raised over $4,000 for the Tree of Giving. We're currently getting ready for our largest fundraiser, which is Mr. SHS, which is our annual fundraiser for Medical Teams International. And I would like to invite each of you to bring your checkbooks and attend. Finally, 160 students currently call Silverton High School home even though they reside outside the Silver Falls School District boundary. So we have 160 students out of the 1,200-plus students at Silverton High School that choose to come to Silverton High School. And finally, I'd like to end by thanking you folks and publicly complimenting Officer Lamro, the Silver Falls School District School Resource Officer. He's made our school safer, and his visible presence is felt every day, and it's a pleasure working with him. And I just wanted to make sure that I thanked you folks because he's making a difference, and it's comforting for not only the student body but for the staff that we have an officer that is in our schools. Thank you.
Go Foxes. Any questions? Thank you, Mark. Kevin Palmer, Butte Creek School.
All right, good evening, everybody. Nice to be here to talk about Butte Creek and kind of fill you guys in on how the year has gone. Things are humming along out there. Right now, this time of year, our site council, school-wide planning team are working very closely with our PBIS and climate team as we put together our revisions for our schoolwide plan for the 1617 school year using the Indistar system, since we are a schoolwide title program. And if you want to just kind of go down, we're going to jump all over this paper a little bit, down around half the paper. Our PBIS climate team members are listed there. I just want to give a shout out there, doing a great job. PBIS climate team impacts virtually everything we do at Butte Creek. Doesn't matter what part of the school, what aspect of it, it runs through PBIS climate team out there. Oaks and Sback are underway. English language arts testing going on now at several grade levels, and math is yet to come. If you would turn the page, we're going to look on the backside and go down to the little kids, talk about the kindergarten assessment, though, kind of a shift away from Sback. I just wanted to share with you all the progress our kinders have made under Sherry Thompson, Rebecca Kinsey, and Kristy Zoller's direction. First assessment in September averaged 22%. Overall, 62 by November, 84 by January, 91 by March. So, I mean, we're talking kids, you know, and several kids start off 1% and are at 90 now. And the years, we still have two months to go. So, full-day kindergarten? Yes. It's working. Loving it. Attendance, I want to talk just a little bit about that. Our school and district attendance goals, 95% for every student, that's our school goal, spent that for a long time. At Butte Creek, we're currently at 94.42%, so we're almost there, but it's significant because it's a full half point basically higher than where we were at this point last year, 93.95. Takes a lot to move that needle in a fairly big-sized school. And it's moving. We've kind of figured out how to do that and get things going upward. Again, on the back of your sheet, thanks to Sandy Sprower, she sends me the district attendance every month at the end of the month, so it's a cumulative thing. We can see, and I don't have it on your paper, but I can send it to you, what last year's month of January, last year's month of February compared to this year's month of January. So you can see how it trends, but basically for you tonight, just included January, February, March 2016 for each school, and the cumulative, though, is for the year, so starting in September. And you can see some pretty good numbers there. So just about half of our buildings have exceeded that 95%, and that's a great thing. Prattham leading the way at 96.61%. So it's really, really good. Last year, partway through the school year, we just hadn't found anything that was working to really move things along. But then we started about for the second half of the year with weekly recognition, weekly contests for classrooms just constantly, and then daily recognition for classrooms that had perfect attendance the day before on the morning announcement. So it's every single day, classes are being singled out for having perfect attendance, and they're hearing that. There's a moving prize every week that goes to the class that has the highest attendance. So we found that was starting to make some progress for us last year, and so we started with the very first week of school, and that was, that was the difference, is it's just been relentless, daily and weekly and monthly, ever since the first week of school. And so that's making a difference in our demographic out there. Right now, we have 189 out of 313 students that are at 95% or better attendance, so that's 60%. So we'll keep working it up.
What's the prize?
It depends. Classes that win the weekly contest, they get to have possession of Bubba the Bobcat, which is a giant stuffed gorilla. Don't even ask. It's what the counselor had. Debbie Scott has this big giant gorilla. The kids love it, the middle school kids love it. They'll carry it around at recess, they take great care of it, it doesn't get dirty. It's dressed in Butte Creek basketball shorts and a Butte Creek t-shirt. So they get to own that stuffed gorilla, it's big, for the week, and then they can do whatever they want. Their teachers take them out for an extra recess, they get an iPad party, magic shows, you name it, we've been up and down all over the place. So they get to choose. The monthly winner gets a visit from our counselor, Debbie Scott, who's got all kinds of prizes, Butte Creek pencils, wristbands, things like that. She bring every kid in the class gets it. So you got to give them something, small, doesn't cost as much, but makes a big difference, whatever it takes. A thank you to our PTT for the second year in a row. They have matched the district funds for student technology devices. So this year, they spent $8,200 to match the $8,200 we got from that $25 per student, which we thank you as well for that. And so by doing that, we've added 30 new Chromebooks to the middle school, 20 new iPads to the primary, and we'll just keep going with the goal of one-to-one at some point. Russian class, I wanted to publicly thank Maria Sanarov, brand-new parent to Butte Creek this year. They moved with their family from Bend, and at one point, the Russian dinner was not going to happen. It's just a lot to take on, and the leaders of it were finally finished for a while. And so it wasn't going to happen. And Maria said, you know what, I'll do it. And under her leadership, erased over $12,000 profit, which is more than double what it's ever done. So, nice new parent to have. So Maria Sanarov, and she'll, you'll hear more of her in the district. Russian class, by the way, is going very strong. We have 42 kids in the three different leveled classes. It's been there all year long, it's never been stronger than it is right now, so it's a good thing for our school. Also, we have summer experience coming up, our three-week summer school. Started in 2011, we've been able to run summer school five out of the six years since then through title funding, but this year, because of the seismic rehab, construction going on, the building is not able to be used. So we thank Markham Methodist Church and their pastor, Rand Sargent. They stepped up, we asked them, hey, would you mind? We've got several church members that work at our school. They said, come on down, let's talk. So we'll hold our summer school down the road at the church. So we've worked out all the details. We're ready to go. It's going to be a great site so we don't have to pause a year, and I've shown you guys in the past what a difference that summer school makes for kids keeping their skills up from the spring to the fall. So we're very happy to be doing that again, and we thank the church for hosting us. The 18th Annual Auction raised over $14,000 under the leadership of Butte Creek parent Peter Molody, a terrific leader of the auction, it's a lot of work. Our volunteer breakfast is coming up on April 22nd. If you're free that morning, it's 8:30, stop on by. We'd love to have you. And the first-ever Read-A-Thon, at least in the first, first ever that since I've been at Butte Creek, raised $4,995 for new library and classroom books. I'm pretty sure somebody threw another $5 in there to make it $5,000. Somebody must have. But $38,398 minutes of reading. So this was a kind of thrown together very quickly and a huge success. So five grand for books. And finally, all the staff members at Butte Creek are just beginning to gear up for the previously mentioned seismic rehab stuff. A little bit of nervousness, packing up rooms and things like that, but I also want to thank Joel Smallwood, he's back there, Gary Marshall, Brett Milliken, they've been out communicating, helping us get ready, planning for what the rooms are going to be looking like, what's going to happen in them. You know, when you got walls opened up, it's time to add in new outlets and new data lines and things like that. So they've been on top of everything, and we thank them for that. It's going to make this a lot smoother. That's all I got.
Great. Any questions for Kevin?
Yeah, Kevin, on the attendance. Darn near to 95%, which is the goal. Where were we at two, three, four years ago? Do you have that off the top of your head?
At Butte Creek or the district?
District-wide.
I don't. I don't.
I know it's lower than that.
Yeah. I think that's fair to say.
Yeah. Well done.
Everybody's moving on.
Thanks, guys. Okay, any board reports tonight? Anybody have anything?
A couple of quick things. First of all, I got the notification from Mr. Hann. I think any of your parents of high schoolers get this informational email. The first thing I saw was 15 valedictorians this year and one salutatorian. That's super impressive. So I just want to say congratulations to those 15 valedictorians and one salutatorian this year. And the job in high school, career well done. We're spending all in their very best of their next step, where they really go to next up in high school. One other thing that I wanted to address was, you know, this past week in Art Town, Christine's article on food service was published, and Christine, appreciate your talking to folks in the community on this and putting that out there. There was one statement in there that I just wanted to address around some public perception about communication, asking board members, and said about a dozen people contacted, said they perceive a problem in communicating with the school board members. I just, I just want to put this out there in the public eye that, you know, we do receive anything you guys, anything you folks send into the board email. You get that passed along to us. Thing is, we don't get a lot of email to the board address. So, you know, if there's things that the committee wants to express, please, I just encourage you to reach out to the general board email that's on the site. It does get to us, we see it all. If you want my district email, you want my Gmail account, let me know, I'd gladly give that one to you, too. But I just, I just wanted to clear that up out there, that we do receive anything that comes into that board email address, so.
Thank you for clarifying that. And just to add to that, we, every, each board member has our own district email address that's listed on the website on the board part, so you can email each of us directly, too. So as well as the board, that goes to everybody all at once.
Or calls at home.
Yeah. Yeah. Phone numbers are there, too.
I do want to say one thing real quick. And then, Andy, when you were talking about the Sodexo contract, you made a statement, and I thought was a fairly strong statement, that continuity is important within the school district. So I'm just asking you, I want to kind of go back to our earlier conversation about jazz band, keep that in mind when you and the powers that be are talking about zero period and keeping the jazz band program, that I think this statement falls in line with that program.
You bet. Good point, Ron.
Okay. Any correspondence? We had an email this afternoon from Bethany Parrott that was really nice to see. So look at that if you didn't see it already. Second audience with visitors, would anyone else like to address the board at this time? This is limited to discussion and action items. Ray.
Richard.
Real quickly, Ray Kaiser, again, 828 Sun Valley Court. I think if I were Andy, I'd be really nervous about spending $50,000 bucks on my own, and as a board member, possibly the same. So I don't know what solutions there might be if you can come up with some way of having a quick meeting, calling a meeting and still give public notice, but even though you got a timeline, you're spending the public money, and the responsibility's really up here. So I think you're asking a lot of Andy to give him 50, 50 grand, 25 is plenty.
Okay, thank you, Ray.
Thanks, Ray.
Anyone else?
Suzanne Marquetti, and I work for the schools. And I just have a couple of concerns about the Sodexo contract being renewed for three years. I'm not sure, we don't have, we don't have a report, a financial report, on exactly how this is affecting the deficit in this school. Is that correct? I mean, it's, they haven't even been here for a whole year, I don't think. This is their first year. And with all due respect to the members of that company that are present, I had, there's quite a bit of concerns among the cooks and the other food service workers at the schools about all the different changes that are taking place. And I realize that a lot of those changes are federal regulations, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure that a management company. I've been with the schools, and I've worked at many of the different schools, and I know that our cooks and our food service workers are, they're, they're the cream of the crop. I mean, they're good people, and they, and they prepare good meals, and they understand the needs of their students. We have students, everything from kids on medication to kids that just, I mean, if you ask them to take a larger portion off of the salad bar, they'll stand right there and have a meltdown in your face. And, you know, there's, there are a lot of different things that aren't taken into consideration a lot of times by a big food corporation that comes in. I think that the food is ordered by supply and demand, but when, when kids are made to take foods that they don't want, just to have a certain amount of portion on their plate, and then it goes in the trash, I see a lot of waste since, since all these federal regulations have come in, and it's probably something maybe that we need to take up with the federal government. I don't know, and I'd like to take them on on it, but I got to start here. We run, we run out of, the portions are so small, and, and they're the same for everybody, kindergarten through, you know, eighth grade, high school might get a little bit more, but the portions are so small. And also, the cooks are, they have to order, they're trying to eliminate. And also, the cooks are, they have to order, they're trying to eliminate waste. But a lot of times, in my school, by the time the sixth graders come through the last lunch, there's not enough food left. So, I guess these are all kinks that need to be worked out, but I'm just speaking for the cooks that, and the other food service workers, that it's just not... A lot of things aren't working at this point. There's a lot of things that aren't being taken into consideration now. I was listening to, when they were talking about maybe having, not really a food service management company, but a, what do you call it?
Committee consultant.
Yeah. Or just maybe trying it for the rest of the year. And I, I understand the continuity and everything, but I think it would be a mistake to really, before we really know if this is helping. I know I had a cer, I run the POS, the computer, and I know that before the, this company came in, that I took care of... And, and I, and we were even told that we had, that this school district, Silver Falls, had the best or the least deficit of any school district that, that they've had. And, and that was the way that we were running things and the way that the cooks were ordering things and serving things. And we just, we just do so good when we're on our own. Now, I don't know how all the deficit came about or, or anything, and I certainly don't know the administrative part of it. But I do know the cooks' part of it and the other food service workers. And we just really, we just really, we don't like to see the waste. We don't like the fact that kids cannot have a second portion even if they pay for it. And I don't understand that. Why, if they have the money in their account to pay for a second burrito, can't they have a second burrito? Why do we throw them in the trash? Things like that. Those are the things that really we kinda talk about and, and bug us. And if, if a kid comes up and says, I'm still hungry, can I have another one? And you got a plate of them sitting there because lunches are all over and, and everybody's finished being served, and you have to say no? That's, that's kinda hard on, on some people's hearts, turning kids away. Anyway, I just, I, I mean, I was like scribbling notes all the time that everybody was talking, and so there's a lot of things. And I hope that I touched on some of the, some of the most important things. But I would really like to see, really, is this, is our deficit gonna go down enough to, to justify the cost of having a big, huge management company come in when we've really done a pretty good job prior? Probably all I need to say.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne.
What are the items that you see being thrown away?
Oh, everything.
Everything.
The entrees being... Well, that's just another little thing, because they've taken a lot of the good items off of the salad bar because they say that they're not healthy item. We can't have cheese, we can't have, we used to have like cottage cheese and peaches and yogurt.
I think the federal government says they're not healthy.
That's all federal government stuff. But, but then, on the other hand, when they serve, they serve like a lot of breaded chicken and breaded chicken patties and corn dogs and all this breading stuff and stuff with fillers in it, but on whole wheat bread is supposed, you know, I just, I don't get that. But those are, those are federal, nobody can do anything about that. Anyway, just, just can have a shout out to the cooks and the, and the food service workers who do a really tremendous job. And they're just, they're having a lot of extra stress put on them because they're, they're not supposed to waste food, but yet they're supposed to have enough food. And I, I haven't seen a cook in our school, I haven't seen her take a break. I mean, she just doesn't get it. And she's taking paperwork home to finish it because it's just, there's so much stuff going on. And I think they're kinda getting...
That needs to be fixed.
Short stick of the deal.
Couple of pieces of order there. I, I know we talked to Andy, you mentioned about portions. Derek, they should be adjusted for K through A to high school. Is, is that...
We, we follow the federal guidelines for K through A and M for the high school?
Yeah. Five, five chicken nuggets, five chicken nuggets.
When, when those, when those federal regulations came out, there, there were complaints all across the United States, same, same issue.
Again, I think it's a federal government issue, getting more... I think the other part is the deficit, too. I know that Steve shared this in our last meeting. I wanna say it's gone from forty-five to twenty-five thousand dollars forecasted this year for the deficit, if I'm correct, Steve?
Yes.
Okay. So, we are, I mean, that's almost half. That's a, that's a good movement in one year. Is it there? No. But I think it's a good swing that we can document in, in one year of, of savings. It's not, again, the system's not perfect. Federal government has put pressures on us, but we're seeing a big swing, over twenty thousand dollars in one year.
Wasn't ten thousand of that grant, the Farming Food or whatever grant?
That's correct, it was.
So, sort of really only saving about ten thousand off.
Well, they, they, they wrote the grant and got, got the money for us.
Well, we have grant writers, we could've written the grant, too.
We could've paid for grant writers.
You could've paid for a grant writer, sure.
Yeah. And just one more point, a lot of the, and I totally get what you guys are saying, and I know that, you know, nothing, that it's, the system is not perfect, and a lot of things need to be worked out. Things need to be worked out still, and as we go along, I'm sure that'll happen. But a lot of the changes you've seen as far as, you know, kids wanting more and things like that, those probably would've happened anyway when we, when we got into compliance with the federal regulations. You know, no matter who's in charge, to get into compliance with the federal regulations, you would've had to, to run the same type of rules or what, you know, as far as the portion sizes and the amount of food the kid's gonna have and things like that.
Well, I can't fathom federal government fining already financially burdened schools because Johnny didn't get a half a cup of peaches on his...
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I agree with you. It's overly regulated, but it is what it is, so.
One, one item she did bring up that needs to be looked into, people aren't getting the breaks, and it's getting work home. We can't be doing that, so I don't know, who should, who should address that, but somebody needs to address that.
Yeah, we've heard some of those as well, and, and be assured, we're taking a look at those. And those were the, on a case-by-case basis that we need to address, those and Andy's, and working with, with food service staff on those. Absolutely. Yeah, I agree, Ron.
Anyone else? Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Krista Castel, and I hold the position of inventory coordinator. And I just wanted to share my role at Silver Falls School District. Before I go into that, I just wanted to share with you, I was a part of SEDEXO in helping run the summer lunch program, and it was a great success at the park. Looking forward to hopefully doing that again. We had record days of a hundred kids at the park. We had multiple sites, and they were excited to always see the van come. And when we weren't there, they were like, when you coming back? Because of, you know, say Homer Davenport Days or another event down at the park. So, it was a huge impact in the community. And my hope is, is that we can have that same impact again this summer, when school's out. Moving into the inventory coordinator position, the position was created to help the cooks out so they didn't have to drive and get food from point A to point B. My role is to help with the orders. We have been able to take inventory from a huge dollar amount at the beginning of the year, reorganizing the cooler and the freezer at the high school, being able to circulate product, share product. For example, Silvercrest and Victor Point are small schools. We've been able to order on a weekly basis for the in-town schools. The out-of-town schools, we order on a two-week rotation. Produce and bread is bred in on a weekly basis. And the goal of the position is to be able to get overhead down, to be able to share that product. And then, moving forward, now that we're through the safety audit and the ODE audit, is, the goal for Sue Ann is to be out in the kitchens, help train the cooks. There's been many conversations about paperwork and training and cooks having to take that home. Since I've been out behind the scenes, helping the cooks, bringing them stuff, everybody's maxed with their time. I mean, we're all asking for more time. But realizing, okay, how's our time management? Are we really staying on top of what needs to get done? Are we looking far enough ahead at our menus? Being able to look at our recipes? And I think that is something moving forward, if we can keep SEDEXO on board, being able to just streamline the steps and the processes needed to be able to have a productive kitchen on a day-to-day basis. For example, there's times when product is ordered, I've already gone out to that school for the week, they're calling me midweek saying, I need product for Friday. You know, who jumps through hoops to get that done? It's usually Sue Ann or I that are jumping through hoops behind the scenes if I'm not asked to sub in a kitchen. So, I just wanted, wanted to share with you that the inventory coordinator position has been a great asset to the overall operation of Silver Falls School District's food service program. And then, in hopes moving forward, that we can get more subs in the picture, which has been addressed with Andy and Andy, so that I can stay behind the scenes to help Sue Ann and support her in the admin role with the ordering, being able to keep that overhead down. So, I just wanted to share that information so you could see what truly happens behind the scenes on a day-to-day basis.
Great, thank you. Good information.
So, do you work for SEDEXO, or do you work for the district?
I work twenty-five hours for the district and ten hours for SEDEXO each week. So, I'm part admin, part inventory coordinator.
So, the inventory position, the inventory, our, our, our food inventory at the beginning of the year was, was higher?
Yes.
And you've got that down much lower right now. So, was, is, is that, is that change of inventory accounted for in the numbers that we're seeing? You know, for instance, if we, if we would've had, if you start the year with a hundred thousand dollars of inventory, and you end the year with, and we, and we, normally it would've ended with a hundred thousand, that's an even. But if it, if we, if we manage it tightly and we got it down to, say, thirty thousand, that's a seventy thousand dollar change. Did we, is that reflected in the numbers? I don't know if that's making sense, but did we, did we, did we live off the inventory and is that keeping our, our numbers, you know?
Well, we're charged a fixed price, two dollars and ten cents a meal for SEDEXO services. So, whereas pre-SEDEXO would've been based on, yes, the, you know, inventory counts and adjustments and that sort of thing. So, we're kinda gone from one method to another. But this is, is, you know, this helps SEDEXO keep the inventory managed, accounted for, to make sure they have enough food at the locations, you know, at any given time. But we're, we're charged based on what we actually use.
Okay, so it's not...
With SEDEXO, yeah.
Okay. You, you understand my question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And our goal has always been to try to use commodity inventory first before we go to our vendors.
Yeah.
And that's what we're trying to get our costs down.
Yeah.
And that's been a big role that I've played in helping get that overhead down.
Yes.
So that we can focus on streamlining all the processes.
And the commodity ordering process is, the, the timing on that is, is very tight. It's, it can be easily missed. There are certain windows that pop up every month or every other month throughout the year. And if you're late to the game on that, you're not gonna get certain items. And I've seen that happen in, in other districts that don't have a management company on board. So, it's to take full advantage of those federal commodities, which are basically free, except for the ordering, delivery fees. That's a big deal.
Steve, nothing from the government is free.
That's true.
Okay, I do have a...
Somebody pays for it, yeah.
Quick question here. So, I'm not sure if I just saw an infomercial or not, but you were talking about you're partially with the district and then partially with SEDEXO. And then you mentioned something about hoping to segue into more of a managerial position. So, were you hoping to segue then out of the district into a full-time managerial spot with SEDEXO? So, a little bit confused.
Michael's just stayed in the position in there.
Which is...
I worked twenty-five hours, yep.
And then, it seemed like a little bit organized chaos in that brief description.
It was when I walked in September first. When I walked in on the summer lunch program, the first project at hand was reorganizing the freezer. We had product that was two and three years old. We...
That must be yummy.
Literally revamped. It was like going to the teenager's room and having to reorganize it to make fast and processes, to be able to say, okay, cooks, here's your order guide. This is what you have. Over since September till now, we're April first, almost into the school year, we have been able to take chaos, turn it into a streamlined choo-choo train that is continuing to move forward as Andy has supported, and realizing that, okay, we, we've gotten this far. Why unplug the electrical cord?
So, are you saying right now you're a smooth-running machine with no hiccups?
Not yet. There's, there's ti, there's days and there's weeks we've had no two days alike. We've had days where it's like, okay, we're going, 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 good, and then there's a hiccup. But we, Sue Ann and I, behind the scenes, have been able to say, okay, how do we fix this in a reasonable amount of time without downtime in the kitchen?
So, when you say behind the scenes, does that mean, are you involving the other staff to help out with the, the expertise and the recommendations? Or is it just you two going behind closed doors?
It's, it's both of us working together, say Sue Ann's in the kitchen, X, say Silvercrest needs product. Okay, we have it at Robert Crest, let's split a place and run something up there to get X, Y, Z product, nay. So, the behind-the-scenes work may involve cook, it depends on the situation. There's no two situations that are the same.
But, but would it be wise maybe to tap into some of the existing staff that's been there for years to maybe help with the process? Rather than maybe just leave them out of the...
Usually, scenarios that come up is strictly vendor product related, not necessarily how do you cook this or how do you cook that? I leave that up to the cooks, that's their expertise. The role of my position was to come on, be able to organize inventory, see what's out in kitchens, how can we get product move? Then, sit down, be able to help with the order placing, being able to sit through and see, how am I gonna stage my deliveries from Monday and Tuesday when I'm out at the schools?
So, you can avoid those hiccups?
Yeah.
Right on.
Yeah. So, the goal is to avoid the hip, hiccup, streamlining things. And I have also subbed in the kitchens. When Nita's asking to sub, I jump in, and I may switch gears midweek and say, hey, can you cover because someone's gone? So, I've, I've seen both sides of it and realizing SEDEXO has made a big impact just on streamlining processes. And moving forward, keeping them on board, we're gonna be able to get more training time. Now that we've gotten the big crouches out of the way, Sue Ann's gonna be able to go out, and Nita also, go out and streamline, how are we gonna get paperwork done in a more efficient manner? Is there time management issues? So, I'm leaving that in their department.
Thank you.
Okay, would anyone else like to address the board before we move on? Okay, thank you, everybody. Some action items tonight. First one, approve Reliant Communications as low-voltage network and infrastructure contractor for Silverton Middle School project in the amount of fifty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. And this is E-rate reimbursable.
Move for approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
So, I was gonna ask, who, who is this company? How did they, did we put out a bid for that, or...
Reliant Communications is the, is the company that secured the bids for low voltage. Yes, it was an RFP published, and they responded and got the contract.
Okay, that's...
Yep.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Todd was in.
Todd was in.
Correct.
Second one, renew fixed-price contract with SEDEXO America LLC for district food service management services through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Is there a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
Aye. I'd like to discuss a little more.
Todd, we need to get a motion to second, person will have discussion.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, now we can have discussion.
Okay. I still think if we can, if we can hire and afford SEDEXO to do this, I think we, our people can do this. You know, Krista was a, she was a great spokesman for SEDEXO. But I, I firmly believe that, that our staff is competent enough to do this. I think we can do this, they've been trained, the new guidelines. And so, I think we need to support them and show that, that we have faith that they can do it and get it done.
Yeah, I kinda, it, it, it kinda goes with a lot of, one of, some of the values of the district, is, is we like local control here. And I, I feel, I feel that we, I, I'm not, I, I haven't given up yet, and I am, and I'm kinda concerned that maybe the numbers have been inadvertently spiked on purpose, but with, with the kindergartners and the way meals are accounted for at the, at the high school. And I'm not sure about the inventory position I was asking, but, but, but yeah, I kinda, I like, I like local control.
I think, you know, I've expressed my opinion before, but I think we have a system that's working now. And personally, I would hate to see that management piece change, just because of the compliance issues and the expertise it takes to meet all those requirements. I just think it's, I think it's more than any of us can understand, just sitting here at some meetings, once, you know, meetings a couple of times a month.
It's, it's economy of scale as well, and we're, we're not a food service company. And this takes specific expertise.
I think the one thing I wanna come back to Todd's comment is that, you know, we are using our staff, right? We are using our existing staff. It's, it's under the guidance of our management of SEDEXO. And again, there's, there, change is never easy. But, you know, the things that we've seen, and the things that I've seen is, there's been some two-way communication. I would hope that with our staff, that two-way communication, the good, the bad, and the...
I would hope that with our staff, that two-way communication, the good, the bad, and the ugly, we continue without any type of reservation of, you know, concern if I say something, you know, please don't pull back. That's the only way we're going to get better, uh, is through good constructive, um, good constructive feedback. So I would encourage our staff to keep doing that. We are still using our staff, we're just using it in a different company. And I kind of like, it was all I said, that I just don't think we have the means right now. If we kind of pulled it right now, what happens? Do we have as a board, do we have the capacity to put somebody in that spot tomorrow? If we kind of took that, uh, that away from SEDEXO? I don't, I don't know, to be honest. I don't know. And is that a good fiscal decision? Would we go more into the red again if we did, if we did that for a while?
Well, our change in the red hasn't been that great. We're talking ten thousand dollars.
For the last four years.
Talking twenty-five thousand dollars.
Well, but you had the grant in there too.
Yeah, well, SEDEXO got us the grant.
We could, we could have done the grant ourselves.
They were responsible for that.
They were responsible for, and we were on an incline from two thousand eleven on. And so.
You know, Eric, and I see, I agree with you as far as, I think the, the biggest issue right now is the reporting. We just don't have the staff that can do the reporting compared to what SEDEXO can do. But my main concern is just giving them a three-year contract at this point. I still think that we should be looking at this on an annual basis compared to just a block term of three years and just see, see what that takes us.
Nick, can we compromise this?
We have a motion on the.
I have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table.
We have a motion. So you would have to put on that and then potentially propose a new motion, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think as far as the continuity, I think continuity's a good thing. And I think the continuity for this thing would be, for this, would be good for the district and for SEDEXO. I think SEDEXO, knowing they were going to be here for three years, could implement things that are going to take longer than a year to, to get fully, fully implemented. I think the changes they can make, I know that they've, you know, in the past, since they've been here, they've spent some money that the district didn't have to spend on some, um, equipment and things like that. And, you know, if they're going to be here for three years, that might, might be something they would kick in some more stuff for. I'm not.
That was SEDEXO dollars and not district dollars?
Yeah, but it's going to come out of our dollars in the end anyway.
Or at least if you have some willingness.
Well, I understand that, but they don't just give away stuff for free. They don't make money.
Well, and as far, and as far as menus and planning and things like that, I mean, there's, there's been a lot of good changes at the high school, I think, in the types of food, or the different options, or options that the kids have now. And, you know, I can see that extended to the, to the other schools if they have, you know, they're going to be here for a little while. I like the continuity piece.
Yeah, and, and one thing I'll say though is, no one's really stepped up from the food staff to say, hey, look, here's our competing offer. I mean, as much as I'd like to keep it in-house as well, if no one has stepped up and says, "I'm willing to take it," who do we have? We really don't.
Well, take it and pay for it is two different things. I don't know a business that when you lose money, you go back and do it again. There still isn't money.
Less.
Well, we have new training and that sort of stuff, you know, now, so.
It needs, it needs a discovery.
The training.
There, yeah.
Who brought the training in?
We, we pay for it ultimately.
SEDEXO brought it in.
But we ultimately paid for it. Like I said, they don't give away anything for free.
But it's a fixed cost, it's a fixed cost equation.
I understand, but they don't give anything away. So when we're paying for that service, that's part of that service.
For our budgeting purposes and visibly responsible, a fixed cost model is much more predictable, much more better for financial forecasting.
I'll call the question.
Okay, question's been called for, so we'll, we'll go ahead and vote on this. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Can we do a show of hands, please? Nays? And ayes? Four to three, so it passes. Okay. Moving on, approve resolution number four dash eleven dash two thousand sixteen in recognition of Teacher Appreciation Week, May second through sixth, two thousand sixteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded, I.
Should I consider it as Todd?
It was Todd.
Any discussion on this? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and once again, thank you to our awesome teachers. Our next one, authorize funding to the city of Silverton for traffic system development mitigation charges as a result of reactivation of the Schleter Street campus in the amount of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. And just for the public's information, this is, this was already a budgeted item. This is just something we haven't approved yet, so. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Did you get that Denise? Okay. Okay, approve funding for change order to the Schleter Project. ADA access changes, multiple door upgrades, fire area isolation and suppression requirements, hardware installation, not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and, Todd seconded?
Todd.
Moved and seconded? Moved and seconded, all in, oh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, did you get that?
How can you do that?
How can you do that if you second the motion?
Just to bring to a vote, right?
Yeah, that's acceptable according to Robert's rules of law.
Okay. Okay, and our last action item, consideration of superintendent authority to approve future Schleter Project change orders up to fifty thousand dollars. Is there a motion for this?
I'll move it, yes. I'll move it.
Okay.
As is?
As is, or do you want to, you want to put a limit on them?
Well, yeah, so maybe there's some changes I want to have in the discussion, I think, should we? I mean, because I'd like to see.
We could discuss it for, why don't we discuss it for a little bit?
Yeah, I like, I like visible, which, which is already discussed, but we should also have it visible in the next public meeting. Just, you know, don't just, don't just fire us off an email. Let us know, let the public know.
As a report, as a matter of report.
Yes, yeah, something like that.
I'd like an email as well.
Well, yes, that too, but make sure the public sees.
Email when it happens, but a report at the, the regular session.
I thought they were about that.
Yeah, because we got schools involved.
I think it's important because, you know, we could get delays. We don't, we don't need, can't have delays on this project.
But we need to be aware.
Oh, of course, yeah, and I have full faith we'll, we'll be aware of everything that goes through. So do you want to do it as is, Tom, or?
How do we edit it, how do we edit that? Um.
Consideration of superintendent authority to approve future Schleter Project change orders up to fifty thousand dollars with?
Email notification.
Email notification and reports at the regular board meetings.
Yes.
Did you get that Denise?
What Tim said.
She got it.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Who's the second?
Wally did. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.